My pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the physical with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Mr. Condit?
Here.
Mr. Molina?
Here.
Mr. Silverston?
Here.
Mr. Walter?
Here.
Approval of minutes for February 11th, 2014. What should we approve? Second roll call approval of minutes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Molina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
I'm staying.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Amendments to the agenda?
Yes, sir, I have two amendments. The first amendment is ordinance 4 to 2014, an emergency ordinance to make appropriation adjustments for 2014 village budget.
Second roll call. It was the first amendment.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Mr. Molina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Okay, the second amendment is resolution number 27, 2014, a resolution to authorize mayor to enter into an agreement with purchase of 2014 Ford utility police interceptor from statewide Ford for a sum not to exceed $38,200 in no sense.
Second roll call.
Mr. Molina?
Yes.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yes.
Mr. DeCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Condit?
Yes.
Going to committee reports, mayor.
I have no reports today.
Mr. Kirk?
No reports.
Mr. S?
Congratulations, hi. 67, which is the 72 Streets for Crossings, I provided a memo to you of the status and what the steps are, so that there's a couple questions, I'll make sure that we're aware. Same with the whole Brook Street dedication, I prepared a memo of status, exactly where it is and the next step, so that if you have any questions, you can refer to those too.
Which one is the landing, Gene? The landing.
Well, we're, who's that? We just don't know, when I've spoken with their attorney, I've required him to send us the petition for the annex, or the assessment to come later, you know, because you really can't assess them because it's still on Prime Street, you can't really assess them, so I'm waiting for him to just get that little document to be, before we approve that one, so that then we can just go ahead and dedicate, and then write it to the assessment. Okay, that does.
And if you remember what he says, it's, the next step is petition and the evaluation of the assessment, so, but just so if you have any questions, anybody's asking you, I recommend you correct me on that. Money on the 319 grant? We got a letter that basically says it's recommended for funding.
It's recommended.
For fund, to pay funds, but they sent that to the Mojave PA, the letter is recommending for funding, and the package the mayor tried, that would give us the funding to move ahead with that one restoration.
The wetlands?
Yeah. Windjammer Trail in Cove, the Regatta Trail, as I told you, other than us doing it with the design of Regatta, we're doing that, what we're going to do is, do as much as we can with Regatta to lower the cost on the windjambers, so that we try and get it as close to $2 that Pinewood will give us, and once we give Regatta Trail done, we'll do an estimate from what was presented to you and tell you exactly. But, you know, I, we're going to do windjammer to begin with, add the cutting valve and so on, now I did the cutting valve for Regatta, so that lessens the cost, so we're trying to get as much money out of the windjammer, so it real supports itself, thanks. Maryland Street again, waiting for just a spring for the restoration, Harrington City Asphalt Department again, the next year, now this trail, there was construction scheduled that was supposedly in your box, with the water line, and spells out now until obvious complete, remove replacement of that particular thing. So that's the intended schedule, weather permitting, they're going to start doing water caps now, and move through the process of fully remove or replacement of the road.
Gene, can I stop you for a minute?
Yes.
I know they were testing on all the new fire items.
Yes.
They probably picked a really bad day to do it, when we had the rain.
Probably, yeah.
I know, but, I mean, those fire items are open forever, and I understand they have to do it.
Whether.
I just think it was bad timing on their part.
It was, but then just they had it open up, to pass the coordination to the rest of the town, and it caps.
Yeah.
And it was probably a bad time, but it was warm enough, they didn't want to, you feel crazy, they didn't want to open it now, because ice would be out.
That's why I say, it's all about the timing, but it couldn't have been any worse. And one other thing on Nautilus, the confirms that they did, going over that common air code and the two bubbles, they have to come up with a better plan to fill those curb holes on both sides, because all they do is throw in that black slag or gravel in, and, you know, they were fine this morning, and.
By snowplow.
Well, between the snowplow and just trap it, those holes are back, I'm surprised we haven't got any planes against the village.
Okay.
If, if we're looking at August, and something needs to be done more permanently, I know they put the concrete in, and that's what dropped on those outside edges, but they have to come up with something more permanent.
Well, we, we'll stay on top of that.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll make sure that's really. And really, that's it? Successes later, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thanks. One other thing, real quick, and I brought it last time, but the shifting of that ridge over Bond Brook there, is there anything that could be done temporarily and or long?
No, because the only thing we, I talked to the service director today, who went out there and looked at it, the steep crease we've had, basically, it's probably lifted the slabs, Culver hasn't moved, that's where it is, and back when we did the runway, there, we went to the county engineer, we were trying to work through a situation, so we could take it off the dangerous tack, reflow, we couldn't touch it, you know, we came from an issue, so we are, we'll evaluate it as soon as it drops down, and we will do a hot patch, make sure that it's eliminated, but right now, basically, you do this whole patch, and it takes one truck, one time, and then I got a cold, but basically, both, both the project, just raised because of equal, equal reasons, and maybe, sometime, if they go down some time, if they don't go down, we'll.
I just want to make sure it's on your radar.
Hell, yeah, I was out there today.
Thank you, Gene. Deborah?
I have one item, was notified by Land Insurance, that we'll be receiving nearly $8,000 refund for removing seven vehicles from our fleets, thanks to the department that's who went through everything very carefully to make sure we have that right, so while we did have an increase in the insurance premium, we're actually getting a lot of money back. Is that a due date?
Because the.
No, there, there were quite a few items.
Less vehicles.
Yeah, so we removed them, yeah.
Chief? Architectural board review?
We only had one application one day for the story deck with a partial roof from the shores, which we passed, we asked concerns about structural integrity, that Mr. Roex is going to look into, but aesthetically, we pass them.
Pining and zoning?
Our report.
Board of zoning appeals?
We didn't have an appeal, and we didn't grant the full amount that that man wanted, we did say he could go out 10 foot, you know, make his deck 10 by 20. We didn't feel that five extra feet, I was over there tramping through the snow, and it goes way down, so that's what we set it at.
Where was it at?
On Redbud.
Okay.
It's one of the houses with the rain barrels that are frozen.
Are they standing up or falling down?
Rain barrels are still up.
Are they?
But the gutter lines are frozen solid.
Finance?
Finance met today before this meeting, we recommend payments in the amount of $144,426.89, of which $108,000 is just the in and out of the jet payments, and our next meeting will be two weeks.
Cable?
Two things, number one, we're working on the budget for this here for the table, and number two, we're checking in very closely to what the recent acquisition of Time Warner Cable is going to mean to the, to the enrollees.
Still being brought up, right?
Yeah.
Comcast. Thanks, then. Communication?
Communications, we now started sending out our new residence kits, delivered four over the weekend, about, and we have a, now we have a kind of a in place ways to find, not only resale, but obviously the built home, so we're excited about that, and continuing to, the four people that got their kits were very appreciative of them, and we're also working, continuing to work on website improvements and overall communication strategy.
Thanks, Mark. Long-term community development?
Thee? Only three at the meeting?
No.
Then I guess another.
Recreation?
We met last Wednesday, we talked about Easter, that will be the Saturday before Easter, and we're moving it back by the police station in the park, we talked about Safety Town, how Stacy decided to take over that, now here I should be concerned that she's probably well enough to do it in time, does Zimber getting any update on how bad she messed up her?
She's laying up for a month.
Okay. We discussed the Family Kids Day, that's a first, that's a new holiday, kind of thing we decided to hold it the third Saturday in June, that way, in case we bought any banners or signs, we can always use them, if they say the third Saturday in June. Chief, I'm told that you will be sure that a squad car will be there? Perhaps an officer to explain things, and Larry said that we will have the service trucks available, at least one service truck, somebody spoke for you. And then you're trying to get that rocket car?
Yeah.
Okay, Chief Plunkett hasn't got back to us yet, but we got our activities planned, summer for sure, summer still working on, and our next meeting will be the Wednesday between council meetings next month, we'll be heavily into the Fourth of July, Andy Gordon stepping down as the head of the Fourth of July Committee, and Phyllis Gaffrick, I believe it's pronounced, will be taking his place, and she's coming up to that meeting to discuss, so, the Fourth of July.
That's it?
Thanks.
Come on.
Touch on that, and I was warned that guys are not going to like me, but as the schedule says, Nautilus.
Oh, might be tore up.
That's right.
Okay, so.
Well, that'll definitely be brought up at the meeting.
Yeah, I. Could be very, I know it gets one side of the road, or I don't think it'll be both four by that time, so.
Should a fire truck get down that one side of the?
It'd be a long ride to go down to 43, and.
I'll bet you want to go on Aurora Lake Road.
You want to have lawsuits.
I want to bring that up, and has the progress, well.
Thanks. Yes, sir, Jeff?
Mr. Condit, could you forward me the information on what you were talking about, where I'm sending?
About the touch and trunk thing?
Yeah, I mean, the concept is to have any of the reminder bill be up there for kids to.
Find out where it is and when it is, I'll have one there.
Okay, I'll get you an email.
Buy markers and everything too for the kids, whatever you, whatever you want.
Just need a car.
Records?
Well, Stacy's not here, no report.
No. Seniors?
Oh, let's see, next breakfast is tomorrow, Cracker Barrel in Twinsburg, and the next luncheon will be Tuesday, March 11th, at the Rusty Bucket in Solon.
That's it? And Jeff?
Jeff's next meeting is next Tuesday, at 7 o'clock here at the Village Hall.
Join the legislation. Table legislation will remain table. Ordinance 3, 2014, and ordinance to increase the hourly rate of the village snow flowers, $15 per hour, effective February 2nd, 2014, first reading. Ordinance 4, 2014, an emergency ordinance to make appropriation adjustments for the 2014 village budget.
Real quick, Mark, on that thing.
Yes.
Is there just an explanation in him, what?
Sure, on the ordinance?
Yeah.
Yeah, the. The 110, 520, basically relates to two large purchases for the police department, the one was.
The radios.
For, it eventually comes back to the radios, but when council approved the purchase of the night vision, whatever that piece of equipment is, it was taken out of that equipment line item, and so in order to purchase the radios, more money needs to be put back in. And then the second one is recording mostly the repairs that were done to Village Hall HVAC, there's about a $4,000 bill, and then if council, I'm not sure if you approved the legislation for DeMarco's, the contract, the service contract, then that will make up the difference for that as well.
Resolution?
Yes, sir.
Just so you know, on, on the 110, 520, the grant that the mayor got from Summit County will be paid back into that line item, but we have to expend it, and then submit for reimbursement after we paid it, and the grant he got, I think, was $27,500. So that'll come back in, straight into the general fund.
Resolution 12, 2014, a resolution to purchase two handheld thermal cameras from Optimum Energy Products L T D for a sum not to exceed $22,425.26, and declaring an emergency third reading. Resolution 15, 2014, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase agreement with Two Remore Company LLC for the purchase of a 3.1181 acre parcel of real property located at the corner of Glenwood Boulevard and Liberty Road for a sum not to exceed $1,232,000, third reading.
Mr. President? I just want to, I know I mentioned it a couple times, and I don't want to just glance past this like it's nothing, because once we do this, we're pretty much committed, I'm still very concerned that we've overestimated the revenue we're going to get and underestimated the costs that we're going to, we're going to incur on this project, and I'm, I just want to express, I'm still very, let's just say uncomfortable with something that might become a tax burden down the road for people who didn't get to vote on this. About a month ago, we're on the front page of the paper, talking about how, you know, we've got rainy day funds, and how comfortable we are, and I'm just concerned that we've got our cleanest streets around, best fire department, best police department, and I'm afraid that we're going to end up hurting down the road, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm not totally at ease with this. Just expressing my opinion.
Okay.
I, I don't know how many people read this agreement, but I know one of the big things we wanted in it, is not there, we wanted to make sure that when we paid them this money, that they give us the drawings that they have done for the proposed rec center, and nowhere in that agreement does it state that they owe us those. So I would strongly recommend not passing this until that's in there.
Dave Riley says it's in there?
It's not in there.
And I even have the signed papers from it.
I have it here, and if you could point out to me where it says that, he says.
Did they not, did they not, did the architect already send it?
And their attorney already sent it. If you could show me in that agreement where it says that, then I will be more than happy to vote yes.
Are we ready to pass this tonight? I mean, do we know which way we're going to be part of the bidding process?
Before we even get to that, I will write to you what Mr. Riley said to me, the construction documents, which are the plans and specifications related, and he bolded that, to the site and building being purchased, that's what's in the agreement, then he writes, this would include drawings for the proposed rec center, that's his assumption, it is not in the agreement that it says that, and I remember many, many times, people saying that what we wrote in the charter might have been what we meant, but it is not what we wrote, and so that's in that agreement, and I am not voting for it, because it's not in there.
We have.
And I vote, everybody else would not vote for it.
DM Dave's, whatever he sent the email he sent.
His response back to me, and I believe he copied Paul, and it was really as a matter of semantics, it's, he's saying that it does read that, that they are required to give those documents as, as we are expecting.
With his seal.
That's his interpretation.
With his seal.
Yeah, that's the attorney's interpretation of the contract.
There is a separate provision here at the end of the contract with regard to the architect's seal, it specifically states.
And the seal of completed plans.
It specifically states the rec center in it, though, and where Tom is talking about, in the beginning of the agreement, it talks about, it looks like he talks about, I'll defer to David Riley, but it does look like it refers to the plans for the existing building, so I don't know how Dave is, or Mr. Riley is extending that to include what's going to be there, but I, it's in two different places, it's worded differently, I can certainly see.
I'm talking Dave Thomas, the attorney for.
For the builder?
Pond.
Or the owner?
For the architect.
Another thing we discussed would be electronic.
Yeah, that's.
That's in there.
That's it.
That's in there, that's. It's in that same section about the CAD drawings, but in that, you know, it's, with the letter, it would further define it, obviously, but it could have been a little clearer on that, because it's different at the end, that's, that's really the only.
Well, in that piece that states the rec center drawings is actually not part of the agreement, it's after all signatures of the agreement, so it's a separate, it's not part of the agreement.
It'd be an exhibit to the agreement, though.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't say that. And if their attorney signed that agreement, sure, he's going to sign it, because it doesn't say that he owes us that stuff. It doesn't say it, you could say anything you want, it does not say it. I, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't. I'm not either, I'm just a layman reading it, and it doesn't say it.
What did Dave Riley process?
He's the one that said it's a matter of semantics, but that in his opinion, that is what it meant.
And you have a letter from.
It's what it meant, but it's not what it says.
And you have a letter from Pauchers attorney and.
You know what I'm.
Yeah.
Why, why does it have to be in contention, why can't it just be written clearly?
Yeah, just write it clearly, right, what's the deal?
He said, David Riley said, if you're uncomfortable with it, he would change the wording, and in his opinion, the way it's written is okay, but if you're uncomfortable with it, then he would change the wording of the document.
You know, we're not supposed to debate with our attorney.
Well, and I'm going to stress again.
If Nautilus is uncomfortable with it, that is sufficient reason for him to rewrite it, it, this is not supposed to be a debate, this is not an extra job for him, it's unclear and we want to clarify it.
And he said he'll rewrite it?
Yeah.
It's a simple sentence.
I, I sort of want to echo what you said, Mark, I really believed that from, I came in May on this, but I studied it to the best I could with the documents, I believe we'll come in pretty close to what we're estimating for the cost of building this. What concerns me is what you said, we're assuming $1,200 family memberships in that first year, $1,500 in the second year, I hope, and I really do hope for the best, that we'll get $1,200, $1,500, but I think we better be prepared, if we don't get that, and where are we going to be able to either cut expenses and running that, or are we going to supplement with a general fund to get it to go? For every 100 people we're short, it's $40,000, so if we only come up with 1,000 that first year, we're down 80,000, are we prepared to make good on that? So I am worried about that, I also think, though, that we sort of let out there that we're definitely going to be doing this, but in the new spirit for anything else, it could be a lot of disappointment if we don't.
There'd be more if we cut service presently.
One way to improve members, it might be to put people on a payment plan, rather than having them pay most of $400,000, right off, put a payment plan of a quarter of the payment for a monthly payment, because that would require some of the financial experience.
Well, we didn't get in all that, but as far as tonight's concerned, we want to table this till the next meeting. We got, yeah, once we pass this, it's, we're committed.
Do we have time to rewrite it, and still be within the window for the industry?
We basically have two weeks with family that rate locked in, and. If, if they could not wait until the next council meeting, if you will have a special council meeting, since Dr. Buntz on.
Why is it, do you think it's worth a special council meeting for everybody back there with the. I don't, I don't think we should be basing our judgment on an interest rate either, I mean, if we need to wait too long to make sure this is done correctly. I mean, that's probably more. The change is so small.
Yeah, it's not a big change.
The change is so small, you can set it up for us, if he can't get this finished in 15 seconds, the changes that you guys are asking for.
They'll need to be signed up by the other attorney, by the other, on there?
They'll do that by a telephone call.
They had, yeah, they had that.
They're just going to add the three words into it.
I don't even know how they could be signing anything until we approved it, so how did he sign something, or anything?
They could sign, they could certainly sign.
I do know four of us are going to be here next Tuesday for the judge meeting, so we could do it before or after, if we, on anybody's.
I'm not going to be here.
Oh, you're going, you're leaving, huh? Okay, well, I'll be here. Sorry. Yeah, that's, that's the second piece. I, I guess my, my thing is, I've sat for two years working on this project, I don't care if it goes or doesn't go, there's some money that's going to be paid either way it goes, okay, but what I don't like, is I tried to set up meetings this week to get everybody together to discuss things, and I'm told nobody can make it, here, this person's got this, this person's got that, but I, I make time for all this, and I got people that come and grandstand at a meeting, instead of, you could pick up the phone and say, I got a question about this, or I got a question about that, and I'll go get. Sorry, I just got this yesterday. In the same way, oh, with you, you can do that, it, I'll go do, I'll go do the work, just, but, but people wait till we come to a council meeting to do this, it's, it's kind of strange when I try to get everybody together and I can't get everybody together.
That's not fair, because I said I was available for each one of those meetings I needed to.
Not everybody was available. And I had a fire in my house, all right, so I wasn't available Saturday, so, that's not fair. I, I asked for Wednesday, I asked. I was available those. I was available those days.
Saturdays. What, you can call me?
I called our, I talked to our attorney.
But you can call me, and I'll, I'll go do the legwork for you.
Talking it's... So I was going to call you to call him, then to call me. I called him directly.
This architect and engineer certificate is pretty clear.
Right, that's not part of the agreement.
It is part of the agreement.
Well, it's signed by applied engineering.
It's not part of the agreement.
It's part of the total agreement. When we sat down with Dave Riley and talked about it, we said this would be the whole package.
Where do you think I got this from?
Could I read this?
This is where the agreement ends, right here.
Could I read this out loud, please?
I have that. You don't have to read it out loud.
Well, the other council member might want to hear. Poncha Architecture and Poncha Gears and Applied Engineering agree that the drawings, specifications, and other documents prepared by them for the recreation center project for which fees have been paid in the purchase agreement are the property of the village of Reminderville, whether or not the project for which they are prepared is commenced or completed. The architect and its consultant, the A E, as applicable, may retain copies, including reproducible copies of such drawings, specifications, and other documents for information and reference. Such drawings, specifications, or other documents may be used by the village or others employed by the village, including other architects, for reference in any completion, correction, remodeling, renovation, reconstruction, alteration, modification, or an addition, or addition to the project without additional compensation to the architect or its consultants. Such drawings, specifications, or other documents shall not be given or sold by the village to be used by others on other projects except by agreement in writing with agreed upon appropriate compensation to the architect or its consultant, if that be more. The A E shall not be held liable for any reason that the third party receives the A E's drawings, specifications, or other documents, and either modifies, changes, or uses the documents. Any use of the drawings, specifications, or other documents without involvement of the V A E shall be at its full risk of the village of Reminderville. This certificate shall survive the recording of the deed. That, that's pretty clear, and they've already signed it.
I'm not going to sit there and read the whole purchase agreement, because that is not in there.
No, you're absolutely right. It's not in there. It's attached as an attachment.
But the purchase agreement does not refer to this as an attachment.
I would say this, that...
And I, I think you should just add the sentence or two, and we'll be good.
You know, that, that could be your wish, and that's fine. The, um, there are two different documents. This is Poncha's. I'm not sure that Two Remoir owns any of the, um, drawings and specs or the CAD with regard to, um, the rec center being included.
But it says you get it with the deed. When the deed transfers, you get that.
Or Two, Two Remoir probably doesn't own any part of that. So, um, I'm not even sure, but it's in there. It certainly does change anything in the purchase agreement. However, Poncha or their representatives have signed a side agreement to, to give us that for, regardless of whether it's nice or not, so... I'm sure that's where David Riley was coming from, when he said it's included. It, it, it may not be part of the purchase agreement, but it's a side agreement. I'm guessing I wasn't involved in all of that.
No, this was... So have you seen that before?
I haven't.
The certificate thing?
That was all yesterday.
I mean, did you see the certificate?
I sure didn't.
Okay, so...
And I'm not checking.
And here's, and here's, I guess this is the part that, that kind of, that I get baffled about, because when the public's sitting out here, out here, you say that it's not in there, it's not in there. They, their first thing is, there's never anything like that. When there is something like that, okay, so you, you need to explain the whole story.
I said there was that sheet after the agreement. I made that perfectly clear.
You didn't explain what it was that says there that we get everything, all the drawings and stuff. You left it hanging out there that it was, it's not in the purchase agreement. It's in the whole process of, you get that whole pack. Now, if you're saying, "I want something that says, 'See Exhibit A,' that we get this and this." I guess Mr. Riley can do that, just like you said, you know? But it, it is there, so I guess I, I, my wish would be that you would not imply that to, to residents and to the public that it's not there, when it is there for your reading, and you read it.
I stated it the way I see it. You might not agree with it, but that's how I see it.
But you don't want to admit that it, it...
I did. I said that that piece of paper was in the agreement. I said it.
And what's it say?
It says what he read. I said that. That is not part of the agreement.
You didn't read.
It's after I said that.
It goes back to, it goes back to what she said, semantics.
It is semantics.
Then, then we agree that it's semantics. It's there, and you think it's not there, so... I, again, I, I stay out of lawyer's sandboxes. I stay out of engineer's sandboxes. I stay in the sandbox.
Then why are we even part of this process?
Because this is the wish that was, if, if you go back...
We're not supposed to give our opinions and what we...
You can, but, but I want you to make a, an honest opinion...
I did.
To, to not, you don't tell the whole truth, okay? Not just part of what you, you think, you know, say, "Here's what it is," and you go through that process. That's all.
You can read back what I said, I said, I mean...
So, but again, this is something that we went back through, I don't know, maybe a year ago or something, that council said, "Yes, go forth and do this." Was it, at least? I'm, I'm just guessing, right?
Yeah, it's true, but the whole situation changed.
Right, and this is totally different from that.
Okay, originally, for one, I don't think grandstanding is fair, because I didn't say anything I hadn't expressed before. And I did vote against the original proposal. And we sat in front in the fire station and had our little pepper alley. We were leasing a building. Now we're land investors, we're land owners.
We're, we're paying less for it now in owning it than we were for leasing.
Yeah, but for twice as many years.
There's additional expenses that keep coming up.
Not for twice as many years.
It's twenty years. The original was ten.
No, the original was twenty in lease, was a twenty-year lease. So, so now it's thirty, and you own it. It was not a ten-year.
Okay, so it's, it's more years now, whatever.
We should talk to her about ten. It was, it was twenty years.
So twenty, and now it's thirty. So it's more. It's more in total.
I just, I just own it as opposed to...
It's still more in total.
Okay, do you want to...
Don't say it's less. It's not less.
It was sixty thousand dollars more a year than what we're going to pay to own it, okay?
But we paid for ten more years at lower rate, which makes it more. Do it in total.
So do you lease cars or do you buy?
I buy.
Okay. You paid more for it.
Not necessarily.
No matter, if I say it's black, you're going to say it's white, so...
Probably.
Yeah, that's the way it's been. All right. I don't care, again, I would say if you don't want to build it, but there are monies that are owed because of the process, if that's the way you want to go. I've never once said, I put, I've net fourteen years as mayor. Taxes have never been raised. All I've done is gone out and find money for this village. And if, if you don't want to do it, that's fine. But I've never asked for any residents to pay for anything more. If I had, the, the idea is to, to build out the out, the outlots, and that's what we're trying to do. At the same time, when the building comes down, the outlots are going up, and there are people interested in going into those outlots if we do that. Because they know there's going to be people coming there every weekend or every day to the fitness center. They don't see enough traffic down there. We can just have them tear the whole thing down from hooks down, and we will have just a vacant piece of land. I can unrun that by them, which cuts down on our tax dollars, because now it's not worth as much. There's a lot of options that we can do, if, if that isn't what we want to do. Don't care. I just need a decision from council. I can't have one way, we want, one week we want to do this, and next week we want to do this, and next week we want to do this. I can't continue to, I can't live like that. And it's like, I run my butt off trying to find stuff, money and everything around here. So what is it everybody wants? I'm, I'm, what it, don't care. Speechless, I guess.
So we have to pay for those plans if we don't do this?
And then buy out for a snap. So, I mean, we can purchase both of that. We can do that and be done with it, and bad investment. And it'll sit up empty, or it'll tear down, or...
But it'll be a lot of money in a significant amount.
I think we're three hundred thousand.
I gotta have the lawyer in there and some other things, too.
I don't, it, it doesn't matter to me. I mean, we can continue to, the residents can continue to go elsewhere. You know, it doesn't make no difference to me.
This is one of the constant complaints that I've heard in my tenure as councilman in Reminderville, is that we don't have something like this. And I've heard it probably a hundred different times, and not from the same people each time. And, uh, and we have to make ourselves competitive with other communities. And we're, we, we're very short on commercial space, and we haven't been able to fill the commercial space we have. Now, the original plan on this was not just for people of the village of Reminderville, but to catch the end of Solon, to catch the end of Twinsburg, and, uh, remember from Aurora with Women's Way. And we were dealing with a warm water pool, which is something that none of the other places have. Aurora is just now talking about maybe considering a recreation center, but they're probably five or six years away, if they do anything. I know this is that, uh, I see people from the village over in the Twinsburg Fitness Center, and that's a hike to go over to Twinsburg Fitness Center. And I think that it's a no-brainer, especially if we're competitively priced, to, uh, to buy locally. And I think we've got some more advantages over in the Twinsburg Fitness Center to... And as far as we don't have the high school kids co-using the, the center while the residents are using it. That's big, because there's been problems over there.
I've spoken with Twinsburg, too, about trying to do some reciprocity, where if you get into one, you get into both type of thing to... Long way off the mat, and I'm sure it'll take me a year to get that done, but, um, that's an avenue to offer more for everybody, which would generate, I would think, more revenue for this, for the rec center. But again, I'm not going to stand in the way of, of, uh, not doing it. I don't, I don't care. This is just something that council said, "Yeah, go do it." I did it, and now when we get down to the love of power, nobody wants it, that's fine.
Mr. Carver, I'm curious, do we have any legal obligations here beyond what we said, paying for the drawings and so forth? Are we potentially looking at a lawsuit if we pull out now?
I haven't seen enough of the documents to know with regard to whether we have to pay for the plans or not. David Riley would be probably the one to ask those questions to, since he'd been integral in the drafting of contracts and agreements. You know, I, I would hate to step out there and say something that he might disagree with, because he has better and more knowledge. And I, I'm sure there are some costs associated. I will agree with you with what you said before. There will be costs associated with the attorney. He has, you know, maybe he hasn't earned thirty thousand, but, um, and, and he won't have earned two-thirds of it if you don't get the finance drops and don't get the financing and all those other kick-in points. But he has earned some money. He has spent some time on it, so that, I'm sure. The plans, um, if you're talking about some of those original plans, you know, they were plans that were given to us, I'm sure that there's going to be plenty of judges out there that would probably determine that they earned something for those plans, but, you know, they've been changed a number of times since, but I'm sure there are some, like those costs associated with it. I don't know what they would be. But yeah, there's going to be some costs.
There's also the issue of, uh, Mr. Gilz has not attempted to market those properties since we have put him on this project, and I believe that he would probably ever quit.
Sort of the direction I was going. I mean, he's been sitting on that property for a year, thinking we were... I have a feeling he's going to speak up.
It, it's going to be a risk regardless. I mean, we, we all know that going into this, this is a, a risk, but, you know, if we believe in what we're doing, if we build a good rec center, we'll get people to come. I, I feel pretty confident in that, so...
You better watch our pennies closely, because that first year or two may be tough. I know what happened in Twinsburg. They had it funded quite a bit. The city had it funded quite a bit.
But now, how are they doing?
They're still being funded, but not...
They made money.
Really?
Yeah.
A year or two, but they didn't, I know that.
She said for past two years. It's getting the right people, the right ones.
I have to say, Mayor Deborah, I've spent a lot of time on this with Deborah's knowledge and everything they've learned from visiting other centers. Know what works and know what doesn't work. I think, I mean, we're, we're at the point, we've got to make the decision, and we need to move on and, and do this.
I just wanted two sentences put into this damn thing. It's got blown way out of proportion.
Are we able to approve it on the, you know, pending that gets put in? Or is that not, would you have recommended that?
I mean, I would also like, compared to me, I've been, I've been asking for this agreement for a lot of, and I just got it yesterday. I'd rather have that. I know it's been changed.
It's been changed. That's why it was the, the clean copy.
I know, but you're saying I'm grandstanding. I just got it yesterday. But anyway. Actually, with our email, I got it this morning.
Would it, would it be, would we be able to pass it to do that gets put into the, how Tom wants to do it?
You can certainly pass it. To the government, it has not preferred method, but you can certainly authorize the mayor to execute that document upon statute.
Are we sure, are we sure that Gilz has the ability to even do it? Does he own those drawings?
Well, we've...
I don't know that he owns those drawings. Uh, Poncha owns those drawings.
Right.
Sure, their names on his record.
But Gilz has paid them. But so Gilz would have the authority to change that?
You're talking about, Gilz is the only one that has the authority to change the language in the purchase agreement. Not talking about changing, if I'm understanding correctly, not talking about changing the language in the architect's, uh, certificate. That's a different item altogether. But, um, what Tom is looking for is to make the language consistent. You know, I, I think what he's asking for is to, let me answer this for a second. In the agreement, it says, um, under three C, "The construction documents," and in parentheses, "plans and specifications," and in parentheses, "in AutoCAD and paper form prepared by Poncha Architecture, Poncha, related to the site and the building being purchased." The building, I mean, if you really want to carry that out, the building being purchased is the building. It's there right now. It's not really the rec center, but yet the architect's and engineer's certificate actually references, if I can find it here. Yeah. It actually says, "Documents prepared by them for the recreation center project." That's, that is, uh...
I think there's a drawing of them.
There is.
So, so the difference is that first...
Part of Exhibit A.
First is agreement. He's just saying, I think we ought to clarify it more and include rec center. That's, I think that's what he had for more. I cannot imagine anybody, I couldn't imagine Mr. Gilz saying, "Oh, my God," because I'm sure it's his impression that already clues that. And it's Mr. Riley's belief that it already clues that, so I don't think it would be a stretch that they would do that. If you want to take care of tonight, you can certainly pass... If you wanna take care of tonight, you can certainly pass, authorize Sam to go ahead and execute those documents upon that change.
The architect and engineer certificate, it's definitely, it's been signed by Pacha, by Gears, and by my engineering. So they've all signed it, the only ones who haven't signed it is us.
How many do they? Would that suffice?
Everybody knows where I stand, okay, reiterating, we'll be here all for good night. I think we need to make him assist it. I'd be happy if they put it in there, absolutely, if they need it, that's what I've been asking for.
Asking you?
If we should approve it upon with that change in mind, is that what he's asking me?
That's what I'm asking.
Why can't we make the change before we go? Ken? And Ken, I was offering a alternative, because you meant that people just want to...
Bridge again here. It's time to make a decision.
I just don't know how long it took me to get it popping, and all those changes, I'd rather see the changes.
Well, if we, if we make the change today, approve it, we see the changes.
The change. He's not the one who wrote it.
Give me my little house. I like the way you're thinking. Checkbook, please.
Well, we're not going to get it now, anyway.
Yeah, okay. Just prove it with the changes.
Now, if you don't like the changes, you can always have a vote to reconsider too. And that's within our...
Most of the reconsider has to be made from the prevailing side, so yes, something I wanted to have be considered, you're talking about prevailing side being considered.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-fourteen, a resolution to accept the recommendations of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the preliminary site of plants submitted by Clover Construction Management for a senior housing complex, second reading. Resolution twenty-four, twenty-fourteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into an agreement with DeMarco and Associates LLC for annual HVAC preventative maintenance on all village buildings for an amount not to exceed one thousand five hundred and eighty dollars, second reading. Resolution twenty-five, twenty-fourteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to file on behalf of the village of Reminderville an application for the Summit Akron Solid Waste Management Authority for the community recycling access grant, and declaring an emergency first reading. Resolution twenty-six, twenty-fourteen, a resolution authorizing and directing the mayor to take all necessary actions to opt in to the STW, any bridge inspection progress to program two program, and declaring an emergency first reading. Resolution twenty-seven, twenty-fourteen, a resolution that authorizes the mayor to enter into an agreement for the purchase of a two thousand fourteen Ford Utility Police Interceptor, statewide Ford, for a sum of C thirty-eight thousand two hundred dollars. Old business? New business?
Old and new. I heard some opinions about how sometimes we don't always record the meetings, and I thought it was council on hold's fault for not appointing somebody to be officially, because we just assume that you're going to record the meeting, but it's not anybody's lone responsibility.
I think we're all set, I think, I mean, there was, around the beginning of the year when Terry changed positions, and I think we have it all, I mean, sitting there waiting, and it was ready, we were going, so...
That's what I mean, sometimes Terry did it, Kyle was here a couple times, he did it, and you did it. We never like made it any one person's responsibility.
I don't know whose responsibility it is, I have a button, but we're set as far as getting uploaded to the village site, or YouTube, and all that good stuff. It shouldn't be an issue, I guess, to report.
Any other new business?
New business? Team, let's just go through that right now. Part of the process, whether it makes a difference or not, I don't know. As we had the design build teams come through and talk to us about building the rec center, and and then talked to Dave Riley and some other options that were available, trying to find the most economical way of building the rec center, to get more bang for your buck. Was either general contracting or CMA was the process, I'll tell you the quickest way, just go to the back page.
It's a breakdown price.
You wanna do it that way?
Yeah, if you're going back to the back page, I'm making money. So mayor, if you're going through the process, why can't I just go build this? We have one design builder that said they had a hundred percent, you're getting those plans. Those are architectural plans, we'll have to determine if we can go working drawings for that. Well, I share office with Thorson Baker, resident in fifty states and work internationally. They've done multiple rec centers that would do working drawings. I work with a CM who today is CM in a sixteen million dollar health nursing home project, and has done this for multiple times. I introduced Roger Westfall, who is a credit architect, who did the Akron Aquatic Center, has done a multitude of projects, and his resume's in there. So he said, can we build it, and can we put this together and find some cost savings for the village?
Because in our contract with Gene, that's states and everybody, CMA and things like that, so that's why I asked him what else we could do.
So I've gone to each and every one of them, given them the footprint based on the Panya drawn, and based on the cost estimate of Panya, that it can be built for three eight, and I said, until we can get a hold of the drawings and walk through them, line by line, and really break it down, I need a good figure that I can go in there and hopefully we can have the cost saving once we see the drawings. And working with that, using a similar format breakdown, that's what I can do for it, and of course would be which is an average of about two hundred thousand plus than where you're at right now. But we're willing to step up and bring the appropriate sometimes regional parties, in case that you have an international firm that works, you know, it's ready for all fifty states that have done this for multiple facilities, you have an architect who's been host thirty-five years, that multiple, multiple buildings, and you have a CM, an estimator that have estimated and do this on a couple buildings. The resumes are in each and every one of those, so you can see.
See, this is contingent on Panya and plan being ninety-five percent complete, is there any doubt on that?
Nate said it.
Nate said it'd be a hundred percent complete, but when they, when, when we did the...
For the locker room, Gene.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, but the point is that we know for a fact that they're complete on Panya.
We're gonna have them change some, Panya's gonna have...
Understand that.
Always change it, so there'll be a hundred percent.
We don't know, isn't that role?
That's what I'm saying.
When they presented it to us, they said these are ninety-five percent, remember when he did, when they did the recent...
So the point is, how do we handle this situation? Our intention is, Mr. Westfall, to walk through and do a code of compliance of what's in there. As, as all that you pointed out, if they're applying children, families, combined that, we might wanna change, change the pool. Okay, these are minor changes. After the code review, or the finalized modification, we go back to Panya and say, okay, change your architecture. Then we take it through the normal process, complete construction jobs, and just go through the process of getting it built, according to the new plan. That's the intention of the code. And, you know, you're not getting ruling, but you're getting a firm that has done multiple buildings of the same site. You're getting the same estimator, you know what I'm saying, but if you're getting a smaller guy that I'm very comfortable with, and his resume's in there, is an hexagon, he has quite a, he can contend with sixteen million dollar projects. He has a list of projects what he's doing. He's an estimator, Mosher, Perfect River Contractors, so he has a long resume, and he's very good at what he does. Thorson Baker, again, they're lead certified, they have every credential they ever want. And for Westfall, as you can see, he has, he's a building official of the year in two thousand two, two thousand and five. He's done multiple municipal buildings, pools, rec centers, so it's my reputation, I'm not gonna get a bad, I've got a very strong group here. And I'm doing this for the mayor and that, trying to buy the village, so we can, you know, maybe that frees up additional money to help, if they help. If, you know, till we get to the bottom line and look at the drawings, you know, what the cost is, Panya's saying, they can do it. Right there, they gave, they said we can build for three seven, three eight, okay, that's where we're at. So that's all I know.
Just wondering if I have another option to look at?
Again, the design bill is basically general contract, general services contract, so and this is, we're willing to take the lead and cover this now.
Thanks.
So Sam, by doing this, like, or with the design build, we brought people in? The other option where we would be, we would take bids on each portion?
Each individual.
So how does, how does this part, this way work?
This will, this will work the same. They'll have a general contracting package put out, they'll be responsible for buying and covering that, they'll have, you know, part of things won't be part of there, they have to cover. They'll have their structural package, architect, the whole thing we work through, the estimating bit out, and then we will oversee the installation and...
You can pick your pool guy, you can pick your...
Not only, like the pool guy, we don't have money here for pool guy, most every pool, and everyone of them said it. Normally, the guy, who you put in, they designed it for you, and we oversee it. So those are type of things, some of the things, I was like a sprinkler system. Why would I, you know, the guy who, the sprinkler system, he did not, the company doing the installation of sprinklers, I mean, you know, quite done. Many buildings that we have that need sprinklers, they don't. The guy who contracted, you know, the sprinkler installer, will actually cap it, he spent the drawings from his manufacturer, very efficient design. So we'll have the architectural, the MEP, and structural, be all handled by us. And then the same, just as they were planning to do, we will bid out each and every package and control the operation beginning there.
And when the teardown, when I talked to Remwar, about trying to have them do the teardown, because they wanna use part of the stuff and build it elsewhere, that means like there's a lot of sprinkler system and stuff that can be saved, it's all over there, and they would do it for forty thousand dollars, I think everybody else had like ninety thousand or something.
The receiver realizes the value of what we're just gonna town, he's not gonna charge us.
I said, either way, we could work out something that can save us money on that end.
Now, when we did the design build, we had to advertise, get bids. Don't we have to do the same now that we're doing it a different way, don't we have to advertise and...
For each contractor, if, if, what Mr. Riley explained it, is in each contract, like we can go out and bid for the pool, go out and bid for the magazine.
But not for the GC, we don't have to.
Just another option.
Can you hear this, Gene? You can do this?
I know Thorson Baker.
You know, the stove well, the center, green well, the center? He did everything in those. I mean, they've done not the two of these facilities. So do I know, can we, can we design and build it? Do I know I can oversee it? Absolutely, I'm bringing the best.
Okay, that's all I wanna really know.
Well, thank you, Gilz, you're you're gonna have to look us in the eye if you don't.
Just talk to you guys.
Okay. Any other new business?
Oh, most of it was Jerry. I'll call when you join in.
Mr. Silverston?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
Yeah.
Mr. McCarlo?
Yes.
Mr. Hoffman?
Yes.
Mr. Condek? Mr. Lain?
Yes.